Good evening. I will call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for March 1st, 2021. Note that we have two items on the agenda, and everyone is here. First is approval of the minutes, the regular licensing board minutes for January 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then for agenda items for consideration, number two, original Class B combination license for S H Juniors LLC Dooley's at 315 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourned by call the Chair.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. First item is the minutes from our meeting February 15.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those, any questions or changes? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item number two, road projects prioritization discussion. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to start a discussion about the prioritization of road construction in the City of West Bend. In 2012, the Board of Public Works and Common Council established a priority list for wood reconstruction projects, and that's the list that staff has been using to schedule the road construction project throughout the years. However, recently I've received requests from other persons to maybe modify the priority list, and so that's why I'm bringing back this item to for discussion in front of the body who created the priority list in the first place. The one thing I would like to mention before the discussion starts is that the city recently entered into an agreement with the county at the end of 2020 for the county to generate a road sustainability plan for the City of West Bend to mirror what the county created for themselves. They created a 30-year plan where they have all the county roads. They basically figure out the current status of the roads and the amount of funding that would be necessary to repair or maintain all these roads. And then once they have that number, given that they have a 30-year plan, they divide by 30, and they know that each year they need to spend this much amount to maintain and repair their roads. And then they just have a rotating cycle with their roads over that 30-year period. And that's the kind of plan that they are tasked to put together for the city. And the first step is obviously assess the city roads and estimate how much it will take to repair all these roads. And after that, they will come back to the city with a draft plan, which you will review, and establish the priority in which the road should be addressed over that plan. Then the county would go back and finalize the plan and bring it back to the city. So I would like to add that with your memo, I included the plan that was established, the priority list that was established in 2012. I also added the five-year plan that we currently have for the roads to be built between 2021 and 2025. I would like to say that in 2021, pretty much we're set, since we have already some contracts out for bids, and soon we'll have some more. In 2022, it's pretty much set as well with 18th Avenue and the other roads that are on the list. So if we would make some changes, it would probably be for the roads to be constructed starting in 2023. All that being said, our recommendation would be to not duplicate the county's effort in trying to modify the priority list that we have right now, because the plan that the county is putting together for the city should come to us as a draft this summer and as a final plan early next year in 2022. And so at that point, we would have a new plan with a new priority list, and I would say that we would duplicate the efforts that the county is currently doing if we were trying to establish a new priority list. Anyway, that was a long introduction, but if you want to have that discussion, if you have some questions that I can answer, thank you very much.
Alderman Allen.
Yeah, Max, I have a couple of questions to start off. Is there a reason we waited 10 years to have this discussion? I mean, we're working from a list 10 years old, and yet we have a requirement from the state to generate current information every two years. Are we expected to do nothing with that? Or, you know, what's a reasonable review cycle?
A reasonable review cycle can be established by any community as they see fit. If the city wants to review the priority list every other year, that would be fine. The plan that was established in 2012 showed a certain amount of work to be done in the following five years, 13, 14, 15, 17, I believe, 18, and beyond. And you could see on that plan that within those first five years, not all the projects were being done. So that priority list was looking at not just those five years, but years beyond, 10 years, 15 years, whatever it would take to repair all these roads. So we had a long-range plan, and to this point, we have not addressed everything in the first six years or seven years of that plan yet. So that's why we didn't feel it was necessary to review that plan or to modify the priority order. Those roads that we have not addressed in that plan kept deteriorating over time. So, and I understand that all the roads in the City of West Bend do the same, but the priority list was established for specific reasons. Coming back today and having this discussion is very good, very healthy. However, I don't think that it's too late or it's inappropriate to have waited that long as we had a plan, a long-range plan that we were following.
Yeah, but we're talking about a project, you know, that we're now gonna, we're gonna get a new and improved plant, long-range plan that's gonna go out for 30 years, and we're gonna start doing 1/30 of that every year. But we're not gonna get that for two more years. So we're really talking about after the middle of the century, before we even get through the first round of that. Correct?
Well, the plan is supposed to be finalized in 2022.
Right. It's a 30-year plan.
What was that?
It's a 30-year plan. So if we start immediately and are able to fund 1/30 of that every year, we're gonna be looking at 2054 to get through the first iteration, and then we're gonna have another 30 years behind that because it's a rolling 30-year plan.
Yes, that's the way it is designed, is to, once you get the roads to a certain point, the expectancy is to have them last for those 30 years so that when you come back, then you can stop the cycle again. And the goal is to have this funding tool so that the same amount is budgeted every year. So we would be in like an operating mode where we have the same budget every year, taking care of the roads over that cycle.
John, could I jump in?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just a couple of things to add to Max's presentation in this conversation. I think from a five-year CIP planning standpoint, and we typically talk in five-year chunks of time, and we're good. I mean, we have, there's no doubt that what Alderman Allen is saying is accurate, that the last time all of the streets have been looked at in any holistic view was 2012. But on a five-year basis, we put together a plan of our own, a capital improvement plan, and so we're solid through 2021. Obviously, we have the roads set that we're gonna construct in 2022 as well. I think referring to the county plan, so this is the first time we're taking a step beyond five years from the City of West Bend standpoint. I wouldn't necessarily call the county plan, county, I know it's called the Sustainability Plan, but what the point is of going through that study of our roads is to come up with a cost. So it's really additional data that the county is going to be providing us with, working with our own internal staff. At the end of the day, you folks are still gonna be charged with putting the priorities of those plans with, of course, listening to the experts like Max in the field. But it's not, it's not like that we're handing off our duty of prioritization of roads to Washington County. That's not the case at all. They're assisting us with looking at, again, a big-picture view of all of our roads and coming up with an annual cost for us. And within that, there's gonna be lots of roads that fall into a similar category and are gonna have to be prioritized by the city. And you guys get to play a part in that. So I think what Max is recommending is that we can have this conversation tonight. There's certainly nothing wrong with that, but from a having all the data standpoint, near the end of this year, we feel like we're gonna be in a way better position to have that and to modify the 2012 plan. I don't know if that was helpful or not, but it made sense in my head when I thought to say it to you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Alderman Allen.
Yeah, so we have a number of things. One of the things I noticed was many of the roads that were rated as number two in 2012 are still rated as number two, which means they didn't magically improve. But they also don't necessarily show up in our five-year plan or the follow-on, you know, maybe we'll get to these in further years, because I know this has been run out for more than five years at a time. What are we gonna do to address that? I mean, it seems like at a minimum, you ought to be able to drive on roads. You shouldn't have to go out and get a goat to travel over city streets.
Yes. And the answer to this is that the Board of Public Works can decide, we're going to fix these roads now instead of those roads. And the one thing is that when this decision is made, or when it was made in 2012, it wasn't just based on the pavement condition rating, the PCR, as we call it, being anywhere between 2 and 10. There are other considerations that got into that decision, such as the average daily traffic, probably development opportunities, probably other aspect, economic aspects. When this council in 2012 made that decision, I remember, and I was not directly involved at the time, but I remember that there were some drive-through with council members in a van, in a parks van, going to specific streets and assessing for themselves which streets' conditions, what the street conditions were, and what they wanted to prioritize. So I understand there are roads that are probably not getting to the top of the list as quickly because of their function. Smaller residential roads, for example, may not get as much priority as arterial roads. So we gotta understand that it's not just looking at the pavement condition rating and pointing at the low numbers and saying, those are the ones. Obviously, this is a decision that you guys can make too, although that would not be my recommendation. I would recommend considering other aspects of what impacts traffic throughout the city to make that selection.
Well, yeah. One of the things that I noticed was when we're doing these projects, we seem to over-prioritize that we should choose for resurfacing those roads that are on top of utility projects that we need to do, when in reality, in some cases, we could do the utility project in and of itself and just patch the area where the utility worked. Correct?
That is correct. But then again, we also consider if a road has a pavement condition rating of six or seven, it would make sense to go do the utility work and patch with the, and then repair, fix the road with a patch, so just a repair over the trench. However, when we get to lower ratings, sometimes we cannot get defined delineation of the trench. You start digging in the trench, and it, the asphalt will crumble in, and you end up getting, you start with a trench like eight feet wide, then you end up with 12, 15, 20, 22 feet, because we don't have a clear delineation because of the asphalt. So at, in that point, it makes sense to go ahead and fix the entire road, because by the time they are done with the utility work, it's pretty much what it is.
Alderman Allen.
Just to clarify about Alderman Allen is where you're, I think you're going, I guess it has to be said that it was previous city councils that made these decisions, not the engineering department.
Correct.
Right? I mean, previous city councils decided this, previous city council said, we're gonna cut back on street maintenance, and that put a kibosh on a lot of these projects. And I don't think we, I think we should keep that in mind.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I agree with that. It's, these weren't engineering department decisions, although they get presented that way sometimes in terms of, oh, we're doing this because it also dovetails with the utility work and they'll fund 60% of the roadway. And, yeah, you get more bang for your buck. I wanna know how much more bang for our buck we'd get if we did our own work. In other words, we just did Boba Link Drive, we did Roosevelt, and there was going to be the same project done on Summit. All three of these are Pacer twos, if, and that's being generous, I think, to some extent. These were all roads that needed some real work. But how much more bang for our buck would we get doing it in-house? I mean, the decision, about 10 years ago, there seemed to be a big emphasis on moving from doing work in-house, in other words, the government doing it, to the private sector can always do it better. Since I've been here, there's been at least one project that we decided not to do because we didn't get a bid that was anywhere close to what we thought it ought to be. I would like to, and I probably should, I'm not expecting an answer right now, Max, but I would like to know what it cost us to do Roosevelt, the work on Roosevelt from Barton to its terminus at the, the drive along the shore, whatever that's called up there. And also the section Boba Link that we did, and what the estimate would be for Summit from Oak to Chestnut, I believe it is. In other words, and it would be interesting if you could also indicate what you think that would cost us to have contracted for those jobs.
Okay. I will talk with Doug Newman, and then I'll, we'll put something together, and then we'll get back to you on that.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Alderman Allen.
Thank you, John. I don't know if this is a Max question, or if this is a Mayor Jenkins' question, but can you describe the way this study is being done, just a little, just in real general terms? And I guess the question I have is, is it the kind of thing that the council should have a representative involved in?
So no, but I know Jay just sat in on a meeting about this. He can actually get the details better than I can.
And Max was present as well, from the city side. I'll take a crack at it, you can fill in. So the county had four representatives at this kickoff meeting for the Sustainability Plan. Max and I were both in attendance. Our contracted engineer, Mitch, and Matt Hyzer was also in attendance from Kiwaskam, because they're doing Kiwaskam at the same time. And interestingly, Mitch covers both Kiwaskam and the City of West Bend. So engineering expert consultants are the same. So that's helpful to have. They wanna reproduce the Sustainability Plan throughout the county for towns, cities, and villages. And West Bend and Kiwaskam are the starting point. So the kickoff meeting was run by Scott Schmidt, the Public Works Director, and it's really about data. And so my answer would be no, there's not, in my opinion, there's not a need to have a council representative, because it's not like a, it's not a committee work kind of thing. It's, in my opinion, solely an exercise in data. So Scott led the meeting, but Mike Van Der Sanden, the head GIS guy, is really gonna be the lead. He's taken all the data. He's got permission from the state to access our Whistler data or Pacer data directly. Max and Mitch will be funneling them information, Doug as well, and our utilities, because the county's system, their Sustainability Plan, doesn't have water and sewer. So ours is gonna be even more complicated than the county plan, and not as, I mean, more complicated than Kiwaskam's as well, just from a sheer size standpoint. But we're in a good position data-wise, but it's really, these next several months are an exercise in us providing them data, proofing the data, presenting the data, updating the data, presenting it in a usable format for them. And then they crunch it in this new whiz-bang GIS site that Mike Van Der Sanden created for them and is looking to reproduce it. And then it spits out a number that says, your 30-year plan costs X, and each year is, if you spend this much each year, you're gonna be able to fund your 30-year plan. That's where we get to come back to you, and I know...
You're just coming back with a budget.
Yep, and a prioritization recommendation, and probably a gap, to be honest. I mean, we're spending $2 million on roads now, and we don't know what that number's gonna be at the conclusion of this plan, but it's likely to be a number that's larger than that.
Right.
That says you should be spending this much on roads.
And prioritization recommendations based on...
Data. It's all, they're producing data. Max and Mitch get to recommend which road. Yes, in part, based on utility work that's needed as well, because the age of the utilities goes into that prioritization.
Well, we did a lot better this year. It's just the concerns I had in the past about our budget and not really seeing the budget. It felt like, it probably wasn't really, but it felt like not really being able to make suggestions or changes or come back with different ideas until it was kinda too late. You know what I mean? I just wanna make sure we're not getting skewed information that we can't maybe come from a different direction on, or something like that.
I referred to the five-year plan already. So the five-year plan is something that you've, you only adopt to fund annually, but you see the other four years. So you, I mean, anytime is the time to counter that. If you're getting skewed data, it's from Max, Mitch, myself. It's not made up data. You can see what roads we're planning for 2022, next year now.
We just haven't done this thing with the county before, so I'm just concerned about it, you know.
Alderman Allen.
Justice, when we agreed to do the, to get in on the county plan, this was presented, and it was presented as, this will be something that the staff puts together, and they'll be bringing that back to you. One of the advantages was places where our plan and the county's plan, you know, where there was like, you know, the county's gonna work on this road, and 12 years later, we're gonna do the piece that touches it. That's all supposed to also get smoothed out some in the planning. So there were benefits, but we basically, as a council, agreed that it was a staff operation.
I agree we did, yes. I'm just expressing concerns.
Okay, Max, yeah, I tend to agree with, we need to start at some point, and we need to start attacking these roads. And if this is gonna be the route to go, to have all this information available, they're gonna tell us what we need, how much money it's gonna cost us. And obviously, if there is a road, and there are a couple of streets probably that do get a lot more traffic, and they start to deteriorate faster than what is going on, that's gonna give us an option to say, okay, well, in 2035, we've got a couple of roads here that are really, really bad, and we need to really attack these to take care of them. Can we maybe look for some money and a budget to get those extra roads done? We can still do that, correct, Max?
Yes, that's correct. And the other thing about the plan, once it's established, obviously, it's established with the deterioration factor in each road. And sometimes, we think, we redid this road in this year, and we're thinking, okay, this road has another 10 years or whatever, and this road that we're seeing, we're saying, oh, it will be gone in three years. Then we sit five, six years later, and that road that we thought was gonna be gone is still holding up, and the road that we thought was going to hold better deteriorates faster. So there's always the possibility to switch roads, projects. One of the reasons why we haven't done this much recently is because all the roads we're looking at are at the same level of deterioration, and they all need the work. And again, if we see another road suddenly jumps up in priority, that's something that we can switch and make happen earlier.
Right. And I remember in those days when there was a van, and there were people traveling every street, checking to see what priorities were necessary and that. We've got the capabilities with technology now that is able to keep us from making this one-on-one and taking a whole day or two days of your time from inside to go and do that. And since we have this technology, we may as well use that. I think it's a great idea. I think it's gonna definitely be beneficial on our part. And yeah, I know some of the roads are bad. I've got some in my areas too, people who are concerned, but patience, number one, patience and slow down. If you know you have a bad street, just slow down, take your time. We don't need to hurry to get to point A from point A to point B. So I really, unless anybody has any other suggestions, I think this is the route to go, Max. Yes, Alderman Allen?
Yeah, I think we really need to look into making more use of our own resources for some of these projects. That's why I asked for the cost for the projects that they did last year as a demonstration. It would be nice to get a little more bang for our buck.
And I agree with you that. I did talk to Doug from Public Works, and they attempted some of their projects. And the biggest thing is, we need to make sure they have the equipment to follow through and do that. And I think his crew can do that cheaper than if we start looking out there.
And I think that's a route that we wanna pursue, and that's why Public Works started doing it last year. Unfortunately, there's been some turnover in personnel, and maybe the new people coming in don't have the knowledge to operate the machine. So there's that too. They're gonna need some training. And so that's why this year, for example, we can't really get them on the equipment and make it happen. They're gonna need to get familiar and trained on the equipment. So, but that's definitely something that we want to consider as part of the whole thing.
Okay. Go ahead, Jay.
Just real quick, and I emailed Doug while we were sitting here to give him a heads-up that we'll be asking Alderman Allen's questions regarding those costs. But just be clear that there's a difference between what our crew can do regarding patching and small paving jobs versus full reconstructions, like you're gonna vote on in a second on Seventh. I know most people know that, but for the viewing public, it's helpful to understand the differentiation. Max can speak to it in way more detail than I can, but our guys can do some stuff with their paver, and whether, when they're at capacity and all that good stuff, but they can't reconstruct Seventh. That's not something that municipalities our size would ever get in the business of. of. Not what you're recommending, Mark, but just so everybody is clear on that difference.
Right. But, you know, it's clearly like in the 80/20 rule type situation, maybe 80% of the projects we can't do. We can do that other 20%, and that can get rid of an awful lot of pain. And we might be able to do it for a lot less than the first 80% is costing us on a, on a per yard, running yard basis.
Ian, do we need to take a motion on this to direct Max to follow through?
I don't think so. I mean, you're asking for follow-up information and everything like that. I mean, Max, were you looking for a motion to move forward with the?
No, no, this was just a discussion item.
Okay.
All right, okay. All right, anybody else? If there are no questions, thank you, Max. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
There is no further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn.
All right, and with that, I will call to order the meeting for the Finance Committee. First on the agenda is the approval of the Finance regular meeting minutes on February 1st.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anyone with any questions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? All right, next on the agenda is an item for consideration. This is going to be an award, the quote, for the construction management and inspection services for Seventh Avenue reconstruction, and I believe Max is going to present this to us.
Yes, thank you very much. So this item is for the services for contract administration and inspection of the reconstruction of Seventh Avenue. We requested proposal for services for, from engineering firms and we received two proposals on January 22nd and they are listed in your memo. We received one proposal from Concorde Engineering Group and one proposal from R.S. Smith. We scored them based on the criteria that we usually use for those and they are listed in your memo as well. Both firms scored very well and Concorde Engineering was the low bidder, which is who I was going to recommend. However, I did have a conversation with them prior to writing this memo because I knew that they already committed to several projects with the city. And I know that last year they started already looking for additional staff, qualified inspectors to handle those jobs. When I had the discussion with them, they were not quite at the point where they were hoping to be. They were still interviewing people and sending out offers. So based on the discussion I had with them with the organization of other city projects, I came back with the recommendation that we should award this contract to R.S. Smith for the total not-to-exit price in their proposal of $140,628. We would use capital project and water and sewer utility funds for this contract. And attached, you have the professional services agreement that was reviewed by the city attorney and approved for signature if we decide to award this contract to R.S.
Do you have any questions for Max?
I actually have a question for the city attorney. When we award a contract to not the low bidder, where the, where the next bidder higher is a substantial amount more, it's almost 10% more, are there any problems that we run into? Do we have some kind of a correspondence from Concorde that says, oh, we're not, we're okay with this? We'd rather you didn't award it to us?
So two things. One, this is a services contract, so it's not governed by the same requirements for public bidding that like a construction contract would be. And the reason, I mean, one of the main reasons for that is an acknowledgement that services are, you know, such as architectural or inspection services are not always necessarily best awarded to the low bidder. So that, which is not the case here, but I mean, that's, there's a lot more flexibility there. Also, and I was just reviewing this in the context of 6215, which is the public construction, there's Supreme Court opinions that basically say that this is within the discretionary legislative action of the council, which is basically exempt from any liability. So if Concorde wanted to sue the city and say you, you know, awarded this to the wrong person and we suffered damages, they basically can't because the city and the council is immune under the legislative decision, qualified immunity. So, so there really isn't any issue with there. And I think in this case, the conversation's already been had with Concorde and I don't think there's a major issue with it. But yeah, in a different situation, you, you're free to, free to make that decision based on the recommendations and the information at hand.
Okay. Thank you. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one question, I'm sorry, real quick, Max. We've worked with R.S. Smith before?
Yes, we've worked with them. We're very pleased with them. They are the firm who designed these projects, so they're familiar with it. Because it's a concrete road construction, we usually do asphalt. So I made some calls regarding this, this team that's going to be there, the inspector to, so I called other communities that did concrete road construction and they come with glowing recommendation from those, from those communities that told me, this is the team you want for concrete construction. So I feel very comfortable going with R.S. Smith, yes.
The one other concern I had is R.S. Smith is out of Brookfield and I read in the description of what they'll be doing is taking concerns from the community. Are they going to be as accessible as Concorde? I suppose not.
The inspector, based on the contract, the inspector is going to be on-site the entire time. And so this is something, we, when we design those projects, we have standards to calculate how many hours it will take to do the entire job. That's how we figure out the contracts will be a 60-day contract or a 90-day contract, et cetera. And so the inspector is scheduled to be on-site the entire time for eight hours a day or sometimes the contractor works 10 hours a day and they don't work on Fridays. So all of that is in the contract to have full presence of the inspector and on-site and at the weekly meetings because we, we also hold weekly progress meetings. And so they are on-site, they're communicating with the residents, they go knock on doors as needed, they get the concerns from the residents, and they're really are the link between our side city hall and the residents during the construction project.
That's what I was concerned about. I know this is a road construction project that the city's very excited about getting, getting handled, but I think there'll probably be some concerns too.
Yeah, and one of their design engineers actually lives in the city of West Bend.
Okay, great, thanks, Max.
Great. Any other further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. All right, with, thanks, Max. With that, I will adjourn the meeting of Finance.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. And I'll call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for March 1st. Note that all are present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
My ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, in the midst of the [inaudible].
Thank you. And I'll start things off in lieu of official public comments. We did have a request from our new library director, Steve Theory, to just quickly introduce himself, so I will allow him to do that before we get started. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Steve Theory, the new library director. I've been here for about six weeks and I thought it'd be good to pop in and see one of your meetings, introduce myself. What I've done the first few weeks is go through a lot of paperwork and learn, learn the job. I met with all the librarians and we have a lot of dedicated people on our library team and a beautiful building, so I'm excited to see what we can do. And also, just last week, working with the Parks Rec Forestry, we opened the downstairs park, Library Recreation Center, I believe is what we call it. And we've been seeing, even when they started their programs, a lot of more use of the library. So it's been a good, good partnership and I hope we'll be building more partnerships in the community in the near future. So that's going to be one of my goals. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Steve. Thanks for coming up. All right, and I'll note that we have seven items on our agenda, first being a presentation, the National Committee Survey Results Report presented by Jade Aroka of Polco, and I believe she's here virtually. How's it going, Jade?
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. And I will say that it's a little bit difficult to hear you all on our end, so if you have questions as I go along, that's great. Feel free to interrupt me, but you might have to do so loudly and/or move closer to the microphone or the podium when you do so, so I can hear you. Go ahead and show the presentation here. Okay, and are you all able to see that, my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Jade Aroka and I am a Senior Program Analyst at Polco NRC, and I'm pleased to be here tonight presenting the results of West Bend's 2020 National Community Survey. I like to start our presentations off with a quote from Jane Jacobs. Cities have the capability of providing something for everybody only because and only when they are created by everybody. And we really love this quote because it emphasizes the importance of including resident voices when making decisions that affect their communities. So since this is your first time working with us, I wanted to cover a little bit of background about the National Community Survey and how, why it's structured the way it is and how it came to be. These 10 facets of community livability that you see on your screen make up the focus areas of the National Community Survey or the NCS. The NCS was first created as a partnership initiative between NRC and ICMA all the way back in 2001, so we've been conducting this survey for a long time. It is a turnkey comprehensive community survey, five-page paper survey in total with one page reserved for demographics. And because of the nature of our survey, we are able to make benchmark comparisons since the survey is standardized to all other communities in our database. We currently have over 500 comparison communities that have surveyed with us within the past five years. And these 10 facets that you see on the screen were derived from extensive research into models for community livability. They also tend to dovetail fairly nicely with various city departments that you may And a bit about the methods for the survey, again, since this is your first time working with us, 2020 was the first iteration of West Bend's NCS. We sent the survey to a randomly selected list of 2,700 households within the community. 1,200 of those households received a three-part mailing that included a five-page paper survey and postage-paid return envelope, as well as a cover letter and instructions for completing the survey. And those recipients, those 1,200 recipients, also had the option to complete the survey online if they preferred to do that. The cover letter, the instructions in the cover letter included a web link so that they could respond online if they preferred, or they could mail in their paper survey. The remaining 1,500 households received two postcards, one week after the other, again with instructions, but they were instructed to go online to complete the survey and did not receive a paper survey in the mail. The reason for this hybrid mailing, as we call it, is it is a more cost-effective way to reach more households in the community. And as more and more communities transition to an online presence, our, our hope and our goal in the future is that we are able to send more postcard invitations to a greater number of households in the future, inviting folks to participate online for a lower cost to the city. With that in mind, we received a total of 631 responses to the survey. 218 of those were those paper surveys, 413 were web, which is a great web participation rate. We saw a response rate of 24%. That's right on par with the national average for the NCS. We tend to see response rates across the country in the neighborhood of 20 to 25%. So that's right on target with what we would expect, as well as a plus or minus 4% margin of error. Our goal is 5% or lower, so that's great. The results were statistically weighted by the community demographics. We use census norms to do this. And statistical weighting is an important step for methodologically rigorous results for your survey. What it allows us to do is correct for any discrepancies between who we heard from in the community and who actually lives in the community. As a very brief example, we tend to hear more from older folks, more from homeowners, more from folks who are wealthier. And so we correct statistically the results in order to weight to the responses, to give heavier weight to the responses of the folks who we don't hear from as much. Again, this is a, an important part of the methodology that we use to make sure that your results are representative of your community. And finally, toward the end of the data collection period, an opt-in open participation online survey was also conducted in the community. This was a link, a different link than was included in those cover letters so that the mail data and the open participation survey data were kept separate. And this link was shared on city website, social media, and was allowed, it allowed for all residents to participate in the survey. We do recommend when reviewing these results that you consider the mail data to be your gold standard representative data. There's a couple reasons for this. One is that open participation surveys in general don't tend to be, they're not statistically weighted and we tend to hear from folks who are more engaged in their communities, as you might imagine. They're more likely to take surveys, to vote, so they're a little bit of a different demographic than the folks who were randomly selected with the mailed survey. And another reason we would recommend that you focus primarily on your mailed survey results, we received 631 responses to the mailed survey. We only received 87 responses to the, to the open participation survey. So again, just want to highlight the importance of looking at the randomly selected data. And I know that was a lot of information. Are there questions about the methodology before I move on?
Yeah, it does not look like it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just said it does not look like it. You can keep going.
Okay, great. And of course, I'll take questions at the end as well, so. Another large part of why communities choose to conduct the NCS is our national benchmark database. As I mentioned before, there's over 500 communities in this database. You can see a map of them here on the screen. And out of 149 total items for which comparisons could be made, 137 survey items in West Bend were similar to the national benchmarks. Nine were rated higher and three were rated lower. You can see the specific items here, and I will go into these in more detail later in the presentation. Those that were higher than the national average were ease of walking in West Bend, availability of paths and walking trails, and rate of voting in local elections. Some of those that were lower, overall quality of transportation system, bus and other public transportation use, street repair, bus or transit services, and a couple other items here as well, but quite a few related to mobility. We also made comparisons to a custom subset of jurisdictions from within the whole database. And of the 149 total items for which we could make comparisons, 137 were similar, five were higher and seven were lower. five were higher, and seven were lower. That custom subset was communities with, other communities in our database with populations 20,000 to 50,000. You can see that list of communities here. And then the specific items that were higher and lower, you can see here on your screen. Those that were higher, vibrancy of downtown commercial area, water resources, again, availability of paths and walking trails, community support for the arts, and rate of voting in local elections. Those that were lower, this is similar to the national list, transportation system, street repair, bus or transit services, and a couple of other items also. So this is our quality and importance comparison matrix. This is just one way in which we can evaluate the data. The survey asked residents to rate both the quality and the importance of these 10 different overall facet areas on the survey. And so this can be useful in order to identify focus areas. If we look at the top-left quadrant here, you can see that residents rated economy as relatively higher in importance and lower in quality than they rated these other items. And this is, I should point out that these ratings don't mean, when it says a low quality, these ratings are in comparison to each other. This isn't in comparison to the benchmark. These ratings are actually all similar to the benchmark. So again, this is relative ratings to each other, not absolute ratings. With that said, economy emerged as a potential area of focus. Conversely, if we look at the top-right quadrant, we see that rated high in importance and high in quality, safety, natural environment, parks and rec, utilities, these are all topic areas in which West Bend is doing well, and residents also rate this as important. So again, this is just one way to look at the various data points in this report. Speaking of that, the key findings I'm about to discuss, these mirror the key findings that are found in the body of the report. I do want to mention, these key findings are what stood out to us as survey researchers, but there is a lot of data in this report, and other key findings will emerge as you review the data on your own. So with that said, our first key finding, residents enjoy a high quality of life in West Bend and give strong marks to the community. 87% of residents rated the overall quality of life in West Bend as excellent or good. And 82% rated the city as a place to live as excellent or good. These ratings were similar to both the national and the custom benchmark comparisons. 87% of residents reported they were likely to recommend living in West Bend and also plan on remaining in the city for the next five years. These ratings were also similar to both sets of benchmarks. Our second key finding, West Bend's economic health is an important priority to residents. And again, this was drawn from that quality and importance matrix that I showed a few slides ago. Looking at overall economic ratings in West Bend, 62% of residents rated economic health as excellent or good, while 91% it was important to focus on the economy in the next two years. 52% gave positive marks to the cost of living, and 49% gave excellent or good ratings to employment opportunities. These are just a few of the items that are related to economy on the survey. These, as well as all other economy-related indicators, were similar to national and custom benchmark comparisons. With the exception of future economic outlook of individual households. So only 19% of residents believe that the economy will have a very positive or somewhat positive impact on their income in the next six months. This rating was lower than both the national benchmarks and the custom benchmarks. I do want to point out as well that, obviously, the pandemic and coronavirus crisis is likely to be having an impact on residents' economic outlook. It's, we haven't collected enough data to be able to say definitively whether or not that is an impact here, but anecdotally, from what we've seen from our clients that have surveyed in 2020, this is not unexpected. Okay, our third key finding, West Bend's ratings for mobility are positive, but street repair is an area of concern. See ratings for different mobility services here on the screen. About 7 in 10 residents gave positive ratings to street lighting, traffic enforcement, and snow removal. About half gave good ratings, to excellent or good ratings to street cleaning and sidewalk maintenance. 44% were pleased with traffic signal timing. All of those were similar to the national and custom benchmark sets. Bus or transit services, 33% excellent or good. This was lower than the national benchmark. And street repair, 19% excellent or good. This was much lower than the national benchmark. And I want to pause here and explain that our metrics for determining higher or lower than benchmark, any rating that is within 10 points of the average rating is considered similar. And then any rating that's between 10 and 20 points higher or lower than the average is considered higher or lower. Anything more than 20 points different from the average rating is considered much higher or much lower. So with that additional context, street repair is much lower than the national and custom benchmark comparisons. Definitely a potential focus area there. Finally, West Bend asked a set of customized questions on the survey related to COVID-19. So our fourth key finding focuses on that. Residents appreciate their local government and rated the city of West Bend's COVID-19 response more favorably than the state and federal response. We're getting into the COVID-specific ratings here. The quality of, overall quality of city services, there in the center, 72% excellent or good. 87% of residents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall customer service provided by city employees. 65% were pleased with public information services. All of these ratings were similar to national and custom comparison averages. West Bend's government response to COVID-19 is favorable when compared to other levels of government. 46% of residents rated local government's response to COVID-19 as excellent or good, which is significantly higher than federal government, 34% positive rating, and state government, which is even lower, at 30% positive rating. Looking at overall impacts of COVID-19, we didn't just ask about, we did ask about physical health. 87% of residents rated their household's physical health as excellent or good. We also asked about emotional and social health and economic health as well. 78% of respondents gave positive marks to their overall emotional and social health, and only 71%, 71% positively rated their overall economic health. Obviously, both of these, still, the majority of residents are rating them positively, but lower ratings than the physical health aspect. Residents were asked to rate their level of concern about a number of different COVID-19-related issues that they have encountered or may encounter. 40% were concerned about being exposed to COVID-19 on the job. They considered this a major problem or a moderate problem. 32% were concerned about infecting others in the workplace. And then 21% were concerned about reduced income from their job due to COVID-19 or uncertainty of their job or income due to COVID-19. There were other items in this question, included in this question as well. These were the, were most highly rated in terms of level of concern. And finally, this slide is particularly useful when trying to gauge what activities residents are comfortable getting back in and participating in the community in, in this new era of quarantining and social distancing. 91% of residents indicated they felt very comfortable or moderately comfortable going to parks or trails. 87% felt comfortable using takeout and delivery. You can see slight declines from there. Three-quarters felt comfortable shopping outdoors at a pedestrian mall or going to a grocery store. Still, 2/3 of residents were comfortable going to shop, retail, or eating out in a restaurant, outdoors. Only half were comfortable eating in a restaurant indoors. But again, this information can be really useful when trying to make decisions regarding reopening different amenities in the city. That is a recap of our conclusions. And before I take questions, I do just want to briefly touch on the fact that it's really important to us as survey researchers that our clients use their survey data moving forward and don't just let their, their data sets collect dust on a shelf. Not many of our clients do that, but we are happy to provide support and resources moving forward for using your survey data. Most common applications for this data, I would say, that our clients participate in are things like strategic planning, resource allocation, budget prioritization, determining future ballot initiatives, performance measurement, et cetera. And I also finally want to mention that surveying is a really important and comprehensive first step in gathering resident input, but we hope it's not your last. There's a number of other ways to gather input and opinions from residents. We like to say that surveys tell you what residents think, but not why they think it. There are other outreach methods that can better get at that more qualitative data or dig deeper into topics that we only got to barely touch the surface of on the NCS. Because we are limited. It's only a five-page survey. There's only so much we can ask. So with all that said, as NCS clients, you have ongoing access to the Polco online engagement platform, which is a great way in which to deploy short question sets to ask open-ended questions. And we even have a new feature called Polco Live where you can interact almost focus group style in real time with residents. So again, happy to provide more resources on that going forward as far as putting your survey results to use and next steps. And with that, I'm happy to take questions on the survey results.
Thank you very much, Jade. Alderman and Dolmec.
I've got several questions. The survey question about a transit service didn't measure well according to, based on the benchmark, but what's the benchmark for that? Are we being compared to cities of the same size? Because it would not be very common. Go ahead.
So there's two sets of benchmarks. It's important to point out. There's the national set, which is everyone, over 500 communities. And then the custom subset, which is comparing you to other communities of similar size, between 20,000 and 50,000 residents.
Okay.
And I believe for that specific item, bus or transit services, I believe the rating was lower in both sets of benchmarks.
We were with, oh, I thought that the result was that we were below for transit.
Yes.
And you're, oh, and so you're saying that we were below even compared to communities of our size?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing, for something like this that would be used for long-term planning, I guess, what was the rationale for measuring COVID impacts? Because we're not, you know, workplace issues for COVID, well, workplaces may not have even been in West Bend. And then the, the second slide had to do with a variety of impacts. And so I'm, I didn't understand what the rationale was for measuring the pandemic impacts because, God willing, a year from now, that won't even be an issue. It didn't look like a long-term thing.
I'll actually let Jay answer that because that was tied to grant funding that we got.
Oh, okay.
We did get all the-
Yes, that, so the CARES Act, we did a special set of questions so that our clients could more clearly tie CARES Act funding to this survey, since those dollars needed to be appropriated specifically for pandemic response. So that, I believe, was the rationale. Now, I do want to point out going forward, there is a set amount of space on the survey that is allocated for custom questions. So the next time you survey with us, you, hopefully, this will be behind us and you can use that space for other custom questions related to another topic area.
Okay, thank you much.
Alderman and Dolmec.
Yeah, hi Jade. A couple of questions. You said that most of, not most of, but a larger percentage of the people that respond to these surveys are wealthier and older. Is that correct? And I think, and maybe I misunderstood, but I think you said something about giving more weight to some of the younger, less affluent respondents. Is that correct?
Yes, I was generalizing, but yes, that is correct. And that's not the, mhm. I was just going to briefly point out, the demographics that tend to underrespond to surveys are, as I already mentioned, those that are lower income, but also those that are younger, those that are non-white, and then those who rent or lived in attached housing. All of those demographic groups tend to underrespond to surveys, and that is why the process with statistical weighting is necessary to correct for that.
And what is, how can you explain that statistical weighting a little bit, or is that too complicated? I'm concerned about the data we're getting being a little bit out of whack because we've got, you know, a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit of diversity in West Bend. So I want to make sure everybody's accounted for.
Absolutely. It is complicated. I can try to simplify the process. And this isn't something that we are going through and doing with calculators. We use a fairly sophisticated statistical software program called SBSS that is primarily, it's used very much in the survey industry and in other academic pursuits for this exact purpose, where it's assigning weights to survey respondents based on a number of parameters. And yes, it's, I've had this mentioned, you know, many times in the past. Well, aren't you manipulating the data? And-
I wasn't suggesting that at all, no.
No, well, no. I have had that said to me before, and I don't take it personally because it can sound like that. So what is really happening is, in a perfect world, if we were to survey, you know, a random sample of your households, and we heard from 100% of them, weighting would not be necessary because we would be hearing from everybody. But the truth is, we don't hear from everybody. And so this process of statistical weighting has sort of evolved over past many decades of survey industry research as response rates have fallen. So for, you know, many decades, response rates were much closer to 100%. But now they're, for, as I mentioned before, for a resident survey like this, we tend to see more like 20% to 25%, which is still good to compare to many others. You know, you can, you often hear about phone survey, political polling, where the response rate is 3% or 5%. So we, in general, see comparatively high response rates for the NCS. But with that said, we're still not hearing from a fairly large proportion of those that we are mailing to. One of the things we do to try to combat that is we send a larger proportion of survey mailings to multifamily housing. The reason why we do that is to try to hear from more of those folks. Again, they underrespond to surveys, and people who live in multifamily housing also tend to check some of those other boxes. They tend to be younger. They tend to be a little bit lower income than their counterparts. So it's an effort to boost response from that, from those demographics. But that only corrects so far. And so what has been shown over and over again in survey research is that, like, groups of people tend to respond similarly to surveys. And so that is the underlying principle behind weighting, why it's used across the board in all gold, gold standard surveys, as we like to call them, and why we actually recommend not putting too much emphasis on raw survey data. Because, again, for using your open participation survey as an example, those survey data are not weighted. So the folks that you're hearing from, they tend to already not be representative because they are more engaged than your average resident. They're going online to take a survey that they found on your website. So their opinions tend to be different. So again, it's been tried and tested over the years and shown to be a valid way to have your survey data be more representative. And in general, the more responses we receive, the more robust and representative your data are. With 630 responses, we can feel very confident in your survey results. I hope that was not overly burdensome of an explanation, and that I also answered your question.
No, that's great. I appreciate your time answering that question. I was glad to hear that it was weighted, to be honest. I just, and I'm also glad to hear it's complicated because it means it's probably more accurate. So thank you, Jade.
Sure.
Klay.
Yep, Korma Krye.
I just had one other question on the weighting system, just to better understand. If, if we do know something like West Bend- If, if we do know something like West Bend tends to be, you know, 52% female, you know, 60% over 50, this much retiree, does the algorithm then take that back into account in the weighting so that we have an accurate breakdown still percentage-wise?
We use census norms for weighting. Right now, we are using 2017 American Community Survey norms for the community, and that's what we're weighting to. So we collect demographic information on the survey. We ask demographic questions, and then that's what we're using to correct to. Once the 2020 census results are out, we'll use that instead. Whatever is the most recent data that we can access is what we use for weighting.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Alderman.
Yeah, are we going to get some type of results other than, than just this presentation? Are we going to have access to the results of the survey?
Yes. We can, we can share, share it with you. We wanted to get the presentation to you in advance, and then we can share the results of the full data set.
Great, thank you. That's fascinating stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jade? Otherwise, Jade, you and I talked about it a little bit, but can you just touch on briefly how the data mirrors our strategic planning and-
I think you just did, but yeah.
Yeah, I think it does.
I mean, there, there really are no surprises in, in the data, the summary data that you saw. I don't think there are significant surprises in the detailed data either. The fact that some, some positives, in my opinion, some, the fact that we were an outlier or a higher ranking for our downtown is pretty awesome, and I was hopeful, but you know, until it came back that way, not, not sure. I put our downtown against most, and I was pleased to see that. The fact that we had folks that voted more than, than others, that's, that's not crazy for me to hear either in our great parks and trail system. The much lower category in roads, I think that definitely came out as well. I mean, that's not a shock to me. The fact, and Alderman Dolnick was asking about the public transportation. I do think with just our taxi, shared ride taxi system, it's not as viewed as a public transportation system as other communities might have with, with buses and such. So I do think that, that wasn't a shock either. So I'll be anxious for you to all get the data and spend some time with it, and please ask questions. We'll share those back with Jade and her team and continue to use Polco as the resource for us.
Yep.
The transportation, this is to, to the survey people, the transportation question, as I gather from the way some of the responses were phrased, that's looking holistically at transportation. You know, biking, walking, taxis, subways, horse and buggy, whatever, right? That's not just, you know, our public transit system per se.
Yeah, each of those items was asked about separately. So bus or transit services was asked about, use of public transit, transportation was asked about. More broadly, we asked about the overall quality of the transportation system, but these are the cities, the mobility-related services that you see on the screen here. Each of these was asked about separately.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds great. Any other questions for Jade? Otherwise, thank you Jade, thank you to Polco for doing all that work and effort for us, and thank you for presenting those, that information.
All right, thank you very much for having us. Have a great evening.
You too. And with that, I'll move on to approval of the minutes, the county council regular meeting minutes, February 15.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Model. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll take items two and three, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Alan, any questions on those? Seeing none, all is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one agenda item for consideration, a resolution honoring Lieutenant Brian Scheringer. And if I could have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Burquist. I'll give that to you, Model. And assuming there's no discussion on that, so all is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I will read that resolution off. It reads, "Whereas Lieutenant Brian Scheringer began his career with the City of West Bend Police Department on February 18th, 1996 as a police officer. In his commitment to preserving the peace and serving the public, he advanced through the police department as a sergeant in 2007 and to his current role as lieutenant in 2020. And whereas during his career with the, with the police department, Lieutenant Scheringer has taken on additional education of his own and training those around him. He continues to grow individually as well as aiding in the department's progression to better the staff and team as a whole unit. And whereas Lieutenant Scheringer has, is certified and instructs numerous skills to police department and city staff, including CPR, laser speed detection devices, narco pouches, standard field sobriety tests, and strike spikes, string spikes. He is also an active member on the DEER management committee. And whereas Lieutenant Scheringer is deeply involved in the community, serving many hours of community service with the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Shop With a Cop, Habitat for Humanity, Special Olympics, and Relay for Life. The West Bend Police Department, the City of West Bend, and its citizens have been well-served by his 25 years of service. And therefore, be it resolved, the City of West Bend honors Lieutenant Brian, Brian Scheringer and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service." Let's give him a round of applause. You're welcome to come up if you have any comments.
Come on, Brian.
Well, not much of speech, just so, I just want to thank you for it's an honor. Thank you very much. It's an honor to receive that. It's, it's very humbling. It's been an honor to work, work with the City of West Bend and work the West Bend Police Department. I've worked with some great men and women and currently working with some great men and women. I look forward to whatever the future holds, whether it's in our five years or our 10 years, but we have our challenges with the young staff. That was one of my reasons for promoting the lieutenant, to work with our young people and develop our department. And this, this job is a calling. I believe that I was led, led by my Lord to this position, and all the honor goes to Him. And I want to take my wife, who's here tonight, who's had to deal with a lot of the sacrifices and some of the negative things that don't make Ellen a public that we deal with in law enforcement, and she has shared more than, more than her burden for that. So thank you to her. Thank you again.
Thank you. And with that, I will move on to reports. A report by Alderman Burquist regarding the library board meeting. Take it away.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was February 16th. The meeting opened with the pledge of allegiance, approval of the agenda, consent agenda, financial reports, and fund balance updates. There was a time for public comments, but again, there was none. The library director is fitting into his new position and will be streamlining the reporting of statistical information to the board. Thank you, Steve. This is just, let's see here. Of note was that a quarter of all the materials in the library are being checked out each month. This is just under the common level of 30%, but is not bad considering everything going on. We received a recreation, our library recreation center update. We were told that the center was already in use and that there would be a ribbon cutting on February 25th. You should have been, or you should have seen the city's press release concerning, concerning that. An important point to make is that other entities are already starting to look at making that a place to go and making arrangements to use the facility for meetings. Plus, the library is also making staff adjustments based on the use of that building, the use of that area downstairs. Parents are coming upstairs, using the library while their children are downstairs in the recreation center. We discussed ongoing bylaw updates to include quorum requirements, virtual voting, and board action without meetings. We discussed the annual report and approved it with minor adjustments. We discussed city email addresses for board members as, as a means of better control of any requests for information of the board, to, in particular, the emails. It was determined to keep things as they were after learning of costs associated. And of course, the next meeting is scheduled for March 16th, right here in the council chambers.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Burquist? And I'll move on to a report by Alderman Kennedy regarding the Park and Recreation Commission meeting.
Yeah, we actually did not meet. We canceled our February 25th meeting, so we did not meet. But to echo what Brent said, they did host a ribbon cutting last Thursday, a combination effort between the library and our Parks and Rec staff, opening up that basement rooms for the recreation activities. Really great to see. Our next meeting for Parks and Rec is going to be March 25th.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Kennedy? Seeing none, I'll go to our closed session item, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85 Para 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is for TID 10 and 15.
So moved.
Thank you, Alan and Model, and Steph, could I have a roll call?
Alderman Butchlook?
Hi.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kaler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Thank you. We will be adjourning from closed sessions. I'll open up if there's any announcements from the council. Seeing none, I will adjourn this portion of open session by the call to chair. Have a great night.